All right, very well. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, August the ninth, two thousand seventeen. It is six thirty eight P. M. And we are at the multi-service center at room three twenty, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, make a roll call. My far right, Wilma Engerman, our clerk, Jim Akabachi. My far left, alternate member Jake Morrison, attorney Jen Kendrick, Carl Baptiste Senior, myself, the chair, Nazir Al Qalasi. We're gonna have to do some preliminary business first, some minutes for July twenty-six, two thousand seventeen.
Wilma looked at this. I haven't had a chance to read them. Wilma was able to read them. She points out on on seventeen seventeen J. N. J. Holdings here that they've got a vote of, and I'll find it here. Where's it showing the vote? Continued hearing. Four zero one. It should be three one one, I believe.
That what? Continue the public hearing?
Yeah.
Who agreed to, uh, uh?
You abstained. You abstained.
Oh, yeah, three one.
And, and I believe-
I wasn't here. Right. She, yeah. So, yeah, she's done.
She, 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 she said no. She didn't want to continue.
Okay.
So it should be three one one.
Then it, then this is wrong as well. It has Wilma seconding, seconding it.
The abstain.
This is a three.
That's three.
This is a one.
And that's it.
And it's a zero?
Zero, yeah, because I didn't second it.
It says, Mr. Enginum, seconding seconds.
She can't abstain either?
No, I can't.
We won't say, Jordan, abstention?
I think she will.
No, zero. I can't, I shouldn't be even on it.
Okay, zero. Three one zero. Okay.
All right.
So I'm gonna put my initials there, that we change that, so that she doesn't have to retype the whole thing.
Okay.
Other than that, Wilma, is it correct for me to say that other than that, the rest of the minutes? With that said, I move to accept the minutes as presented with that one minor modification.
I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Okay. Let me fix my numbers here. Jake. Okay, so let's sign. All right, uh-
One, two, three, five, six.
We have site, site plan revision, a revision for Cape and Island Tire. They're not here.
I don't know if they're here, but they did send a letter.
They did.
And I do have their folder. I just grab it.
Oh, yeah.
I get, no, I get the letter. I wanna get their folder and see if there's anything new in the folder. There probably is. So did you see the letter?
I don't know. I'm just looking.
There, there.
Janet, did you see this?
There's a there's a site plan drainage-
Charlie, did you get that letter from Cape and Island? No.
First I've seen, um.
Yeah.
First I've seen. Do you have that plan that says drainage and grading? Is that, well, I see a couple of plans there underneath the letter.
No, I just handed him the letter.
No.
Okay. Okay, so there's a big, huge plan here. Drawing five of eight.
Sides.
Uh, let's see if that's in here.
You aware of it?
Not directly, but maybe I can help a little bit.
All right, just your name for the-
Brian Grady with G. I. F. Engineering.
All right.
I believe that letter prepared by Bob Rogers.
Yeah.
He spoke with Mr. Buckland and submitted some revised plans to Mr. Buckland. Ken said everything looked fine. We thought he would be here tonight to explain it to you. What's going on is there's just a little addition of some fill in the front of the building to raise the grade, which actually increases the landscape width in front of the building. Initially, the footing was designed as a four-foot cantilever footing. I guess it was only built at three feet. So they had to add some additional fill to make up for the difference with that cantilever design. So it's the addition of some fill in the front of the building, which actually, I guess, gives us a wider landscape buffer. But it has, Mr. Rogers met with Mr. Buckland to discuss the changes, which I guess Ken had no problem with. And I don't know if he relayed that to any one of you.
No, but we do have a plan.
Yeah, I was wondering. That foundation is pretty high.
Yeah, I was looking at it too. I drove by, but-
So the landscape and buffer right now, it's, I think it's four to five feet. And they're proposing ten to twelve because-
Increasing the buffer.
They're increasing the buffer because at four or five feet of landscaping, the slope would be three to one, which is very steep.
I saw three to one in this letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right, right there, sir.
The state's gonna take half of it anyway. The only thing, I, I don't know how much they're taking. On that side? They, yeah, they're gonna do it here. So we let Charlie look at it. We decide next time. Do you know if they, they're only in the foundations stages now. I don't think it matters.
I don't know what stage they're at. Bob's working on the project. I've only heard things out of one ear. That's why I'm-
I have no problem with that, but we let Charlie look at it. We'll decide next meeting.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But I don't see a problem with it. It just, uh, it's actually will look much better for me anyway. You wanna look at it, Jen, Jake? You understand what I'm saying? The foundation is too high?
Yes.
And they were supposed to do four feet of power, like grass strip or, or like landscaping?
Drop off.
Yep.
But because it's too high, it doesn't look good. So they're gonna make it like ten feet, so it's not too sloped.
Right.
Which is makes sense. But we'll let Charlie look at it and we'll make a decision next time. Wanna show Wilma?
Sorry, Wilma.
Okay.
No matter how hard I try to ignore you, you won't let me.
You'll miss me when I'm gone, huh?
Yeah, we decided to ditch you.
But we heard your case already. You lost.
Yeah. I'm gonna show Charlie.
All right.
Yeah, go ahead, Charlie. You wanna, you wanna move on?
Yep.
Then I'm gonna hand this whole file over. And let him, when you're done with that, would you put that back in here? Thank you.
No, he's keeping it.
Okay. So do we need to make a motion to table that until next meeting to make a-
Yeah, we'll make a motion, have Charlie look at it, and we'll make a decision next me, on the twenty-third.
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Very well. And the, I guess the condition for Charlie to check it. Is that enough time, Charlie? Two weeks?
From what I see, there's only great changes. It's flat for five feet, then it goes down into three to one. And judging from what the letter said, I think it's a matter of not enough depth on the foundation. You need a four-foot depth of cover over the foundation.
Frost wall, yeah.
Probably figured for a frost wall, they probably figured there wasn't enough with the existing grade. Adding this fill gives them the frost protection they're looking for.
Right.
And other than that, it's fine. So I don't notice there's any need to go-
Do we even need to, do we even need to wait till next week? Can we make a decision right now? I mean, we're listening to his-
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's reopen.
Let's, so moved.
Okay, all in favor to reopen thirty-three dash sixteen, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're back to the matter three oh five seven Cranberry Highway and the request of the petitioner for revision as presented on plans drafted by G. I. F. dated what?
Of course, it's folded in such a way that there is no date showing. So we'll find it. We'll find it. It's July thirteenth.
So we'll find it. No, no.
Date of the-
See the revised plan?
Eight twenty-four?
Seven twenty-one. All right, so it's based on the revised plan on seven twenty-one, two thousand seventeen, drafted by G. I. F. Engineering and signed on eight one, two thousand seventeen.
So I move to accept the minor modification as proposed.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, carries. All right, very good. Public hearing twenty-eight dash seventeen. Erasmo and Lisa Mitrano, fifty-four Pleasant Street. Wanna come forward, please?
I'll read you in in a minute.
Just give us a minute.
The applicant is requesting a waiver from the requirement of obtaining an engineered plan. See that? Yeah. I just put that back when we're done. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on August nine, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty P. M. in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., zero two five seven one, for consideration of petition number twenty-eight dash seventeen for a special permit from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-one, and Article thirteen, section thirteen thirty-five of the Wareham zoning bylaws. To Erasmo G. and Lisa Mitrano, Mitrano, forty Washington Terrace, Somerville, Mass., oh two one four three, seeking to enclose a pre-existing, non-conforming, second-floor deck located at fifty-four Pleasant Street, Wareham, Mass. That's on assessors map fifty-eight, lot seventy-six, in the R. thirty zoning district. So.
Do you have any plans there?
I don't think I have. I'm looking. That's what I'm looking for. I have. Here's something. Here's something for you, Wilma. One, two, three, more.
All right, just your name and address for the record.
My name is Lisa Mitrano, forty Washington Terrace, Somerville, Mass. And my husband speaks broken English.
I speak words, broken English.
Okay.
Erasmo Mitrano.
Bene.
Okay, you got it.
All right, uh. So what are you trying to do? You want to enclose of-
Second floor, we just wanna close the two wall. You know, it's a porch right now with-
There is something in here.
All the roof, everything, you know.
Okay.
Yes, the roof above it, the attic is above it. There's a first-floor bedroom below it. And the second-floor porch, we just wanna enclose it because we're worried about water damaging the surface of the porch, and it will leak into the bedroom. Because it, you know, there's furniture out there, like sofas and some little end tables. We're afraid that dragging it will compromise the condition of the flooring that's there and cause water damage to the bedroom below. So in order to avoid that, we just wanna close up the, the existing porch. We're not enlarging anything. It's just closing it up. You can see from the pictures, the before and the proposed after pic, after. It's no addition whatsoever.
All right.
All right.
You got-
So can I ask some questions?
See, yeah, that's what they wanna close. See?
Yep.
Wilma, you have that picture with the-
Yeah, she's looking at it right now.
Okay, okay. All right, so they seeking for a relief for Article Six, for, uh,
Article Six, Table-
Table six twenty-one and Article thirteen, for section thirteen thirty-five for a special permit.
All right, and let's see what the buildings-
You're just gonna close it with windows, regular walls and-
Yeah, put a couple of window, you know, and, at the wall.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Wilma, what do you have to say?
From what I can see, they got a open porch. They want it closed in. And they're closing it in with windows. And which, to me, looks like they're making an extra room.
Well, is that prohibited? What's the non-conformity?
It's, it's a special permit, existing non-conforming. It's not a variance.
Right, and the non-conformity is the, uh-
It's a setback, I think.
Well, he's got, Article Six, Article Six, Table six twenty-one requires a ten-foot setback, and he's got seven and a half.
Yeah. And he's got, he's got seven point five.
That's not gonna change whether we grant or deny because it's-
Right.
It's on the second floor, and the house is there.
So on, on that part, I think that it's moot. But on the second part, Article thirteen, section thirteen thirty-five, the building inspector or commissioner takes the position that enlarging the non-conforming deck is an intensification of a pre-existing non-conformity. I, um, on first blush, questioned the word enlarging. You're not enlarging anything.
Yeah, I- Right. That, that's my, uh, that's my, uh-
As I say.
No, no, you see, you can't speak. Let, we'll talk. We'll let you know when you can speak, okay?
Okay.
I, that, that's my view of it as well, Jim.
Okay.
There's no, um, there's no, nothing that is being enlarged here. The deck's not being made larger.
And I don't believe we're, we're substantially increasing, and we don't need a variance. I believe, I almost feel it's moot to ask for a special permit, but I'm-
No, we do. It, it does enlarging the living space, but-
They're, they're not enlarging the deck, though.
No. But it's, uh, that's, we'll decide if it's a special permit or advance based on section thirteen thirty-five, which I, I think it is a special permit. It does not, it's not detriment.
I think we're all in agreement on that.
All right, anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor or against? I hear none. You wanna say anything else? Good?
No, we just feel that this has to be done, or we're gonna have major damage to the bedroom below, as I stated before.
Got that.
The, the house was originally built this way? The house was built with a covered porch?
When we bought it, it had, it had the covered porch, the, the open porch.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's somewhat cantilevered, I guess, based on this picture. Do you have any idea how many square feet that deck is?
It's twelve by twelve.
Twelve by twelve, hundred and forty-four square feet.
Yep.
So I, I, I hear Wilma's concern about them creating another bedroom. I don't think that's our concern, though. That would be border health if there's a septic issue, but I don't think that has to do with-
I don't think it's a detriment or anything.
I don't think, I, I, that's just the way I'm interpreting it, so. Okay, I'm done with my questions.
Could I just make a comment?
Yeah.
It's not going to be an additional room, and there is no septic. It's sewer in that area.
All right, very good. If I hear no more comments, I'd like to close.
I have.
Aye again, sorry.
Okay, she just said it wasn't gonna be an additional room, but it doesn't look like it's an enclosed porch. It just looks like it's being made as an additional room.
We're not going to put heating in there, so it won't be
No.
a, a bedroom or a family room or anything like that.
It's gonna, it's gonna be a room, I mean, you know.
It'll be like-
It doesn't look like a port, enclosed porch. An enclosed porch has windows
Right, right, right.
and screens around. This looks like a neck, a room that's being enclosed. And you said there's no heat going in, but that doesn't mean during the summertime that you couldn't put a-
Does it matter, though? Respectfully, I don't think it matters whether or not it's a room or not. I think we're here because we have a pre-existing non-conformity, and that's the only reason we're here. And so the issue is simply whether or not this is a substantial increase in that non-conformity, namely the, the, the setback. So I, I, I don't know that there's anything that would prohibit them from making it a room. The, the building inspector hasn't cited anything. Um, I, I don't, uh, so I-
But they're here before us to make it an, an enclosed porch. An enclosed porch does not have walls with just three windows. An enclosed porch
No.
has windows, might have around the bottom enclosed, but has windows around. Yeah, for people to sit out there in the summertime that could have.
Correct, and that's what they're asking for. They don't have windows now.
But they are, only putting three windows and a wall.
So it's gonna be enclosed, okay.
I mean, if you look at the drawing.
Excuse me, what's that?
Go ahead.
It's gonna be put those two wall with insulation and a plasterboard, so it's gonna be like a roof. It's gonna be a roof.
We're not going, we don't want it screened in because we'll still have the water hitting it when you get those wind ra, windy rays.
So you don't, so you're not making a porch?
It's, it's not a room. It's, what do you call it, like a three season porch?
A three, three season, it's an enclosed porch. I have a porch on the front of my house. It's entirely enclosed in glass.
Just says they're seeking to enclose the deck.
If the town told me I had to take the glass out and put screens in to call it a porch, I'd tell the town it was absurd.
No, I'm not talking about that. But you could put, in your windows, you could put screens and in, they could make,
I can.
they could make, put storm windows in and have it a screen.
All right, we'll, we'll decide with the vote.
Okay.
How's that?
Okay.
Okay, so I hear no more arguments. I'd like to move to close.
So moved.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor to close, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Okay, discussion.
Go ahead.
I, I've already made my comments.
All right, you, uh, you wanna make a motion? On the thirteen thirty-five, Jen?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, as I've said already, I would make a motion to approve this as a special permit under thirteen thirty-five. I don't see that there's any substantial increase in the non-conforming nature. In fact, I don't see any increase where the non-conforming nature is, is that the rear, the setback is ten, and they have seven point five. Nothing about that is changing. So based on that, and the fact that I, I don't see how putting walls around an existing porch is going to cause any detriment to the neighborhood. There's no one here from the neighborhood. They ever given notice. For those reasons, I think that I would make a motion to approve as a special permit under section thirteen thirty-five.
I would second that.
Second by Jim. Any, any discussion on that? Hear none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Abstain, that carries. You got, thank you.
Abstain.
Uh, she opposed zero.
Do you have it? It's, it's-
So abstain.
Four, four, one, zero.
Four, one, zero. You're good.
Thank you very much.
You just have to wait twenty days, and you go to clerk, have it signed.
Okay, so I will get something in the mail, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your decision. Have a good evening.
Have a good, have a good night.
You too.
Very well.
Let's sign this before we kick you out. Wilma, would you like to put your name on here?
I will.
As dissenting.
I will.
Is everybody here? Everybody's giving me back. This is-
All right, at this moment, I'll turn the, the table to Jim. We have a conflict on petition seventeen dash seventeen J. N. J. Holdings, and Jim will, will moderate. Thank you.
Yeah, but before you leave, we'd like you to sign this, and we'd like you to stay on, even if you go sit with your attorney.
Does he have to sit with me?
He doesn't have to sit with you, and you don't have to sit with him. But we'd really like to have him available in the room. So we could have him available for questioning if necessary.
I prefer the word "carry me."
Yeah, well. You see that, you see that yellow thing up there? It comes down, and there's a spotlight.
Claws.
Thank you, sir. I think we got everybody.
Oh, he's united.
One, two, three, four, yep.
One jinx it.
Okay. So we get the folder.
Well, thank you. How are you?
Good.
So for the record, we're going back to, um, petition seventeen dash seventeen J. N. J. Holdings, Inc. This petition has been postponed multiple times because the board failed to have enough members here to vote. We believe we have enough members here tonight. We've discussed this thing ad nauseam. Before, anybody have any comments? Would you like to make some comments or vote? Okay.
We just have the two approach, deal with the variance first, and then any good-
Yeah, right, I, I think, first place, good evening, everyone. How are you?
Thank you.
So we have been here before, and we've talked about this project, and I think that, you know, we were looking for two different things, first being the variance in connection with the landscape ordinance, and that was, we had talked about the compromise of, in lieu of moving the landscaping, we're gonna keep the landscaping around the building and comply with the requir, requirements, and then we were going to seek a variance only in connection with, I believe that's the southwest corner of the building, which would encroach on that twenty feet minimum, which would push it to thirteen feet. And the only reason why we hit that twenty-foot variance, the twenty-foot minimum, is because it's industrial versus commercial butting one another, so that's how we, we have twenty feet minimum as opposed to the ten-foot minimum. It, the property itself, the butts will let go. It's a retaining wall in place right now with a road right behind it. I think we have pictures that are out there as well. So that's the variance piece that I think we, the board and our group has discussed at length, and I, I think-
I, I believe the last time we met, we officially or unofficially, we had the town engineer look at all this, and the town engineer had sent a letter saying that he had not had an opportunity to review. We extended, and then he has had an opportunity to review, and he has since made the comment, and he's here to verify what I'm able to say. You are prepared to recommend?
Yeah, you should have a letter in your file, July to July twenty-first, where I recommend an approval of plan pending your vote on the variance.
Okay, and I believe in the file, we also have something typed up here that's notice of decision of the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe this has all been pre-typed, and we're ready to go. So really, all we're looking for tonight is a vote, yea or nay. Is that, does everybody pretty much agree with that position? So, so that we don't waste a lot of everybody's time, first I'll ask if there's anybody here from the public that would like to speak in favor of this project. Seeing and hearing none, I'll move. Is there anybody here from the public that would speak against this project? Seeing and hearing none. I close this to the public, bring it back to the board. Anybody on the board have any further comment before we take a vote?
The only, I have one question about the property. It is, got an awful lot of vehicles on it right now. Our, when are they gonna be cleaned off? I mean, you've got a big truck in the front and another car. On the side, you have cars. In the back, you have a boat.
The truck in the front is registered. The boat is registered.
No, but I am saying that you want this property to look like-
Right, well, apparently to do construction, we're gonna move them, but there are registered vehicles. And the boat is registered and has sticker on it, as well as the car and the truck in the front.
No, I'm just saying you, you seem to be storing them there, 'cause that's where they've been for the past, I know, two weeks, I've noticed it.
Yeah, probably more than that. That's where I park them. Bec, but they are registered vehicles. I have, I could park them in this, anywhere.
You don't plan on leaving?
No, I can, if they do construction, I have to move them, right?
I mean, that big, you're, you're going, you're going for a car dealership.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna move them to do construction.
And that big truck.
Right.
You don't plan on storing it there?
No. No.
You plan on moving it?
Of course. Yeah, absolutely. So we could do construction. We have to move it.
Just think it's a mess.
Do you have any other questions?
Nope, that's all I mounted upon it.
Jake, do you have any questions? Jen?
No questions.
Carl?
I have nothing.
Then, um, again, when I sit as chair, I try not to be the person making a motion. Would somebody be willing to make a motion to either accept or deny this petition?
Yeah, Jen.
Go ahead.
You wanna make a motion?
You go ahead.
I make a motion that we, uh, accept or, as presented.
Okay, do I have a second on that? Somebody's got, I'll second it. For lack of any other second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed.
One opposed, four in favor. It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, very good. That was easy.
We're done.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Do we need to officially say, close this hearing? Close this hearing. Thank you, we're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank, yep.
Do you have any, gotta write any conditions up?
Yes.
Um, I think the conditions are- Um, I think the conditions are, as presented here, already pre-written. I'm just gonna attach this.
Take a look at it just for a second.
Sure you can. Yep. All right, very good.
Are you okay with me reading over your shoulder? Yeah, these are not mine.
This is a special permit, isn't it? Four, one, zero.
Is there any other business you guys like to discuss before we adjourn? Hear none?
No.
Wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Do you need to make a motion to approve site plan?
I think they did approve it.
Was that just on the variance portion or was that for?
Everything.
That was everything. Okay.
Can, can, can we do one vote for everything? I apologize, I meant to speak up sooner about that.
Well, if you, if you feel as though it's necessary, let's take a second vote, one for the site plan, one for the variance.
Variance first and then you approve the site plan.
Yeah.
Okay. So let's have a motion to approve the site plan.
No, so go for the variance first.
Well, we already did. We voted.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That was my understanding was of the first vote. So, um, so I, I would make a motion to approve the, the site plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Carl. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So the site plan also passes four one zero. So one was for the.
Not to be a dish, but can I ask, uh, just one question regarding the site plan?
Sure.
You talked previously about being permitted to pave a lot with the base statement and then not sealing or doing the top over for two years. I just don't see that reflected on here, uh, it is.
I don't think, I don't think we need to vote on that and, and I think we all reflect, we, I commented, I think the board agreed. That's the preferred approach.
That would be my understanding. I just wanna make sure that we weren't gonna.
Nobody's gonna come and tell you to pa, pave over the paving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain.
Before you guys take off, we gotta sign this thing for seventeen seventeen.